To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Again, good evening. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Milonazo.
Here.
Mr. Conway.
Here.
Ms. Dougherty.
Here.
Ms. Laraba.
Here.
Mr. Leahy.
Here.
Mr. Leary.
Here.
Ms. Martin.
Here.
Seven yeas approved.
Thank you. Just let me make note that we do have a new agenda that was left on each desk this evening, so we'll be working off the new agenda. There are no special order of business this evening. Next item would be the minutes, the public budget hearing for FY 2011, which reconvened on June 29th. Again, our recording secretary should be congratulated for the work that she's put into the sets of minutes that we have this evening. Motion by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Conway to approve the minutes as presented. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Milonazo.
Yes.
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Ms. Laraba.
Yes.
Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Next item would be the regular school committee meeting minutes of July 21st. Motion by Mr. Leahy, seconded by Ms. Laraba, to approve the minutes as presented. Any further discussion? I don't think we have a roll call. All those in favor of the approval of the minutes signify by saying aye. Post the vote. Thank you. And then we had a special meeting of the committee on August 4th. Motion by Mr. Leary, seconded by Ms. Dougherty, to approve the minutes as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Post the vote. Under permission to enter, Madam Superintendent.
Thank you, Your Honor. Bay Cove Human Services, Inc., for the amount of $63,858 to provide for district tuition costs for one student enrolled in receiving services as outlined in the Special Education IEP. Funding provided by the School Department Special Education Tuition Account. The Acre Family Child Care Center, Inc., for the amount of $16,800 to provide three part-time, under-six-hour family childcare spaces and transportation for infants and toddlers of Evenstar families in order to allow full participation of parents in the Evenstar program. Funding provided by the Evenstar Grant. Constellation Energy Projects and Services Group, Inc., for the amount of $82,495 to provide monitoring services for 23 heating and EMS systems between October 1, 2010, and April 30, 2011. Funding provided by the School Department Building Maintenance Account. Embry &amp; White Elevator, Inc., for the amount of $66,675 to provide repair, maintenance services to school elevators in various locations within the city of Lowell. Funding provided by the School Department Building Maintenance Account. Wayne Alarm System, Inc., for the amount of $95,970 to provide 24-hour central station alarm services, as well as maintenance, to all alarm systems over the next three years. Funding provided by the School Department Building Maintenance Account. Westboro Pest Control, for the amount of $63,000 to provide monthly maintenance and pest control service and spot treatment services in public school buildings over the next three years. Funding provided by the School Department Building Maintenance Account.
Any questions, Ms. Martin? Overapproved by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Dougherty. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Milonazo.
Yes.
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Ms. Laraba.
Yes.
Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Thank you. We have five memorials this evening. I would ask my colleagues to have a moment of silence in dock and chambers for Christopher Joseph Cudero, Lowell High School student and member of the AFROTC program. Patrick Pat Dignan, brother of Robert Dignan, food service director. Ann Varney, aunt of Donna Martell Whitney, Special Education Records clerk. Dorothy I Plunkett, mother of Patricia Gajeka, Title I Director, and aunt of Martha Leary, substitute workshop trainer. And Edward A. Lashaw, retired state representative. Can we please all rise in a moment of silence in dock and chambers? Thank you. May they rest in peace. There's no unfinished business this evening, no public participation. Right on to the motions. Motion by Ms. Dougherty requests the superintendent to provide the committee with information regarding the videotaping of high school sports. What sports are videotaped? What are the tapes used for? Who does the videotaping? What costs are associated with this activity? Who determines what gets taped when and what is the policy? Seconded by Mr. Leahy. Ms. Dougherty.
I thank You, Your Honor. I think the motion pretty much speaks for itself. I'm basically looking for some information for the committee. I've heard conflicting information about videotaping being done at high school sports, and I just want to get clarification on what is going on with that area. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor, Mr. Leahy.
Thank you. I guess I did have one question when I look at this. When, I guess, through you to the maker of the motion, are you looking to see if this is part of like the school program, like the kids that are in telecommunications academy?
Basically, as my motion indicates, I'm interested in finding out the videotaping that's happening for certain sports at the high school. I had heard that some sports were being videotaped, but I wasn't able to get clarification on that just through initial channels, so I thought ask for it officially. It really, if during the course of getting this information, we find out that the Lowell Educational TV studio is doing the videotaping, I don't, it's not really about Channel 22. It's about the videotaping that's been happening at the high school and whether there's any consistency and is there a policy. Just information about videotaping the sports.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Post the vote. Next motion by Mr. Leary. Request the superintendent to provide the school committee with an update regarding the recent federal stimulus monies. The update should include how much stimulus the Lowell Public Schools would receive, if any, where the stimulus can legally be spent, the administration's recommendation for where the stimulus should be spent on a priority basis, and what timeframe, if applicable, would the stimulus be received. Seconded by Ms. Martin. Mr. Leary.
Thank you, Mayor. I think it speaks for itself. I think there's a lot of information out there, a lot of folks who were laid off within the system have been contacting all of us, seeing exactly what is the plan, how does it work out. The paper today said, you know, one thing, we've heard other things. Just basically, what does it apply for? I know that almost the majority of the cuts that we made were actually library, media, technology folks, which are not technically teachers. That was almost about $800,000 worth of cuts. Would that be a part of it? That type of information. And then really, I guess, what the administration's currently doing anyway, working on an appropriate plan to, if we do receive funding, how would that be implemented? Thank you.
Mr. Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I certainly will agree with the motion. I think it's an excellent motion. I'm just wondering at this particular time whether we could add something to it or perhaps make another motion, because it's my understanding that we're talking about, which has been reported anywhere from three and a half to four million additional monies coming into the school system. And as Mr. Leary has said, we need to take a look in what type of plan that we're going to have and how that money is going to be allocated. It is also my understanding, it has been reported to me, I've been in contact with the Chairman of the Ways and Means of the Senate, and he confirmed the fact that the governor will be making an announcement on either Tuesday or Wednesday morning, explaining the situation and explaining the fact that X amount of dollars will be coming back into the school system that we can utilize to bring back many of our programs. And I'm just wondering, because of the time factor here and the planning, that I don't know if my, the members of the committee would agree with me on this, but perhaps we could call for a special meeting that Wednesday, so that we could have, hopefully, through Mr. Leary's motion, I'm wondering whether the superintendent would have some type of direction on where that three and a half million dollars might go, and we could have a special meeting on Wednesday night. If that's...
I mean, I'll amend it to any time. I don't know, that's fine with me. I don't have a problem. I think the only thing, what I've been told differently offline from a lot of administrators, that the Department of Ed really doesn't have anything going till next Thursday, because they don't know how the actual implementation's coming from the feds, so it's quite complicated. I mean, what I read in the paper today was a lot different than I've been told offline by a lot of different people. And I don't want to confuse it by adding more to it. If that is true, that the governor is going to have the specific outline Tuesday or Wednesday, I'd be pretty cool with amending it to having a special meeting as appropriate whenever. Thursday night might be even more appropriate if he comes out on Wednesday. I'll amend it to anything. What I was almost doing, but going to have to cancel, was lining up a finance subcommittee to talk about it on Monday, but that, I was told, that's pretty much, from what I've heard, is premature. And through you, Mayor, to the superintendent, what I think I was told is that there's a telephone conference with the Department of Ed on Thursday, next Thursday.
Correct.
Okay. I mean, I, that's a good idea. I mean, as soon as we know, we need to make some decisions, and if we need a special meeting, I'll go along with it, whatever date it is.
Madam Superintendent.
Mayor, can I refer to a report that's in the packet on this topic? That would be taking it out of order.
Motion to move an item out of order, I believe it's under Report of the Superintendent, the New Federal Stimulus Funding and Race to the Top Update. Motion by Mr. Leary, seconded by Ms. Martin.
Suspension of the rules, to bring it on.
We need a suspension of the rules by Mr. Leary, seconded by Ms. Martin. All those in favor of the suspension, please indicate by saying aye. Post the vote. Madam Superintendent.
Thank you, Your Honor. So, last week, after Washington voted that these funds would be coming to the cities and towns in the Commonwealth, Mr. Chesser, our Commissioner of K-12 Education, emailed all the superintendents and told us at that time that they weren't exactly sure how much money that meant for the districts, or what criteria would be used to send it to us. At this point, as of yesterday, the Department of Education's Finance Department, Jay Sullivan, has contacted Mr. Lang and said that there will be a conference call next Thursday. And it is our understanding from the department that at this time, that they are determining if we will have to apply for this money through grants, or if it will come to the city through Chapter 70 funds. So, for us, knowing that there will be some monies coming, regardless of if it's through grants or if it's through Chapter 70, we have, and I asked Mr. Lang to please email the committee, as I was in leadership this morning, that information, so you would have that update, that we still don't know the amount of the monies, but what they were wrestling with. With that said, we did meet, I had Mr. Lang and other assistant superintendents meet to discuss today with the principals, just to have the beginning conversations about, okay, if this money comes, we need to start planning, and to have those conversations around where do they see, after all of the cuts that have occurred in their buildings, the biggest holes, the biggest gaps, the biggest concerns. So, we have, I just want the committee to know, even though we don't know a lot of the details, the planning has begun, because based on all information at this time, some monies will be coming to Lowell. And as you can appreciate, it will require a great deal of planning for us to spend this money wisely.
Thank you. Ms. Dougherty, then Mr. Conway.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think it's important that we take a step back with this. I'm all into getting more funding for the district, absolutely. But I think that the key points that we know, we're not going to have information until next week at the earliest, and we need to give the administration time to think carefully about what their recommendations are going to be and the best use of this funding. Once we know what are the requirements of our use of the funding. If it's going to be an application, I'm sure there's going to be certain criteria that we're going to have to meet in terms of how we use the funding. So, my opinion at this point is, I think, getting an update, as Mr. Leary's motion asked for, is absolutely essential. We have an update tonight that, we've got a timeframe, but we still don't have specifics. We will continue to be updated, and then once we have a clearer picture of what we're looking at in terms of money and what the requirements are about that money, then I think we could schedule a meeting when the superintendent has some information to bring forward to us. That would be my recommendation. I don't see any need to schedule a meeting right now until we have that information. Thank you.
Mr. Conway.
Just very briefly, and again, I agree with the motion. I think it's an excellent motion, and it's something that certainly shows that we have to, it's wonderful that we have this motion on, because now we can sit down and talk about how we can take care of the services that we have slashed in the last year. The only thing I, as I said, with communication going back to, with Senator Pangetakis, and he gave me that information, and I said, "We're having a meeting Wednesday night." I said, "Is this something that you want me to say, or would you prefer that I do not?" And he said to me, "Absolutely. Give that information to the committee. Let them know, because I know that they have to plan as quick as they possibly can, because school is opening up in a matter of days." And as he said, "I'm sure that every day is going to be extremely important." That's the only reason I brought this forward. And when we talked about, and I said to him, "When would that meeting take place?" And he said, "The governor is coming out with an announcement either Tuesday or Wednesday." I believe it's Tuesday. And he said, "You can pass that information on." And that's when, and I said to you earlier, Mr. Mayor, that I would probably make that, to perhaps amend that motion, which again, is a great motion, but just to, let's see if we can get this going and have a meeting on Thursday, and again, so that the entire community understands where that money is going to be going. Because again, it's one of those, it's one of those good times stories that I think that we're all going to be very happy that the money is coming back. So, that's up to the will of the committee, whatever they want to do. If they want to wait until the following week, that's fine with me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Currently before us, under suspension, we have the report of the new federal stimulus funding and race to the top. So, we would need a motion to accept the report as a report of progress by Mr. Leary, seconded by Ms. Martin. All those in favor of accepting the report as a report of progress, signify by saying aye. Post the vote. Getting back to the regular agenda, Mr. Leary's motion, what's the wish of the committee? Any more discussion on the motion? Mr. Leahy.
Thank you. So, through you, the superintendent, this, the motion really has nothing to do with the report. His motion was on, and then we were getting the report anyways, right? We were getting this report regardless of Mr. Leary's motion.
The report was done before the motion came in.
Right. And as of now, we really, we don't really know anything.
Right.
Okay. All right. Because I was surprised to read in the paper. I mean, I, this is all news. Everything that everybody's saying tonight is news to me. So, there's nothing concrete yet?
That's correct.
All right.
Everything you know is shared, and that's why I copied the full body of the text from the commissioner into my memo, just to be clear that that's what we know. And I asked Mr. Lang to please email the committee the information that he received from the department today, because from our perspective, again, we do not, we are not authorized to say we're getting X amount of dollars. We've read the Lowell Sun the same as you. What we have been told is the fact that the monies may come through Chapter 70, the monies may come through grant application process. We're not exactly sure, you know, as general as the quote was from Federal Secretary of Education Ernie Duncan in the paper today, it was to be spent on teachers, no administration costs that presently exist, and quote, "other school stuff." And that, you know, so it really is not at this point providing a lot of guidance. So, that's the, my understanding is the conference call next Thursday to tell us what exactly we are allowed to spend this money on. I'll remind the committee that when the first stimulus package came, there was very clear guidelines, that we received approximately $2 million every year for special education, and they told us that we were to build capacity with half of it and to save jobs with the other half. We received approximately $2 million with Title I stimulus, and the first year, they clawed back a million, and we ended up really with one, but they were very clear on how we would spend that too, around the same guidelines that I just stated. So, we're not sure, again, what this will mean, but as soon as we know, we will share it.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Martin and Mr. Leary.
Thank you. And I do think that's the key thing. I mean, if we're talking, I mean, there's no guarantee that every district is going to get this in any kind of incremental way. I mean, the reality is, is that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education could decide to target districts with particular issues, with particular problems and challenges. I mean, so this opportunity, you know, we, I think we're all really optimistic, and I would even dare say excited, that there's actually some good news on this front, for the first time in a very, very long time. And I think that there could be a real opportunity, particularly in the city of Lowell, to take this funding that's coming through and be able to spend it wisely and well. But I do think that until we get some sense of exactly how they're going to be releasing these funds, we need to kind of sit back and wait and hear exactly what the commissioner has in mind, what the priorities that the governor is going to share at his announcements. And I do think that it will be incumbent upon this committee, as well as on the administration, to be able to be particularly nimble in our responses. So, I applaud the administration for already having conversations with principals. It's always great to have, you know, that information going in. But I do think the devil's going to be in the details, because we have all seen the way the strings get attached. So, I think that preparedness is great, but until we get some actual information, it's going to be, you know, it's, we're kind of, you know, planning in the absence of real information. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Leary? Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Post the vote. Thank you. Moving on to subcommittee reports. Joint Lowell High School and Athletic Subcommittee's approval of the minutes of the meeting of August 4, 2010. The chair would recognize Ms. Dougherty.
We actually recorded this meeting right after meeting. So, while we need to do tonight, unless my colleague would like to add anything else, approve the minutes, that they be formally added to the vote. But we did discuss the meeting in detail.
We did. That's correct. Thank you.
Thank you.
Accept the, approve the minutes as presented by Ms. Dougherty, seconded by Ms. Laraba. Any discussion on the minutes? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Post the vote. Next subcommittee report, Athletic Subcommittee, reporting approval of the minutes of the August 11 meeting by Mr. Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It was a well-attended meeting and rather lengthy, and I'll try to keep to the main points as much as I possibly can. We had Mr. Leahy on the committee, and we also had other committee members. We had the mayor, James Milonazo, Jim Leary, Allison Laraba, and Connie Martin. In central office, we had Dr. Scott. We had Deputy Superintendent Gene Franco and Jay Lang, Assistant Superintendent. And out of this, we had Lowell High School Headmaster Edward Russ Marek, and the Athletic Director Jimmy, James Di Profio. The two items on the agenda, Mr. Mayor, was the safety in sports and also the athletic team fundraising strategies. At a previous meeting, we had, we had a couple of issues that came up in public, and it certainly, it certainly had many people confused and also concerned. And what was reported was that in the fall of 2009, there were 33 injuries that were suffered by concussions, and also that there was a 10-to-1 ratio that was established by the MIAA, the Massachusetts Interscholastic Athletic Association. And needless to say, that concerned the committee, it concerned the public, parents. I know that, I'm sure that many committee members received telephone calls because of that. What we did is that the actual numbers, we asked the headmaster and also the Athletic Director to come up with a report. And the finding of that report was that the documented concussions for the 2009-2010 football season was actually 13 and not 33, and that there was no predetermined regulation or requirements that exist of students-to-coach ratio in the MIA regulations. And further investigation showed that the Athletic Director pointed out that there was a span that basically ranged anywhere from 21 students to 21, excuse me, from 10 students to 21 students per coach. The headmaster spoke about the importance of maintaining the student-to-coach ratio to an acceptable level. He reported that funding would be sought out to make this possible through various sources. He also shared that if fundraising was not sufficient, that the team members, the team members would have to be reduced to ensure sufficient student safety. And the headmaster met with various coaches and provided a report of the needs of the sports teams regarding their safety. He wanted to sit down and talk to all the coaches to make sure that the levels that they're at right now was appropriate and that the students were safe. Following the report, the headmaster and a variety of discussion topics followed, that included questions of the status of the union, negotiations, and the immediate need to open discussions of the bargaining process. When asked by the superintendent, the Athletic Director, Di Profio, stated that volunteers could fill coaching positions, and that was something that we talked about. And then that naturally went into, we wanted to make it perfectly clear what the role and the legal responsibility of the volunteers were, and what type of training they might, they might actually need. And the fact that they would be under the jurisdiction of the head coach. Questions on the process of training volunteers, and also the uncertainty of volunteers to make a full-time commitment. This was expressed by one of the coaches, that he was concerned that somebody that was volunteering would not be committed for the entire season, and how that would impact the team. Parent concerns were voiced regarding scenarios when students have to be sent to the hospital when there is only one coach present. And we had a rather lengthy discussion, I believe, that came out of that. We talked about the strategy of making sure that there was a protocol put in place, so that if that did happen to a student, that we would have the steps put in place to make sure that the student was safe. The second part to the meeting was the athletic team fundraising strategies, because this is where we talked about, how do we, how do we fund these sports? Because needless to say, I think everyone agrees that sports and clubs and so forth are extremely important for the, for the total education of the student. And we talked about the fundraising strategies when the Athletic Subcommittee, we talked about the superintendent who reported the possibilities of fundraising as a means to support the sports program during these difficult financial times. Dr. Scott came up with an idea that I certainly applauded her for it. I thought it was an excellent idea to get the Lowell High School, excuse me, the Lowell School System, Middlesex Community College and the University, and also the business community and the community at large, to combine forces so that we could have a fundraiser. And once again, this fundraiser, I thought, was very innovative and creative, that we could have this fundraiser, as was pointed out by the superintendent, for sports and clubs, to try to fund them to the capacity that it certainly would meet the needs of the students. And also, there was a concern, there was a concern with using fundraising as a means to support core functions such as coaching and the ability to sustain the support over time. And I think what was also brought out, Mr. Mayor, was the fact that, you know, we were certainly hoping that these economic times were not going to go on forever, that this would be basically a Band-Aid, should we say, on the situation, the economic situation as far as sports and also clubs are concerned. as far as sports and also clubs are concerned. That, you know, anytime we have fundraisers like that, which was brought out, whether it was golf fundraisers and other fundraisers, that, you know, they do lose some momentum as the years pass. And I think that was certainly brought out very clearly. And there was also a need for assistance to plan events to fill a financial gap, and some ideas that were shared for fundraising strategies. The idea for the superintendent to form a committee to develop a fundraising plan and review the ideas with the Greater Lowell Foundation, which was brought up, I believe, by Ms. Martin, a suggestion that was made by Mayor Melonazzo for the superintendent to verify the legal amplifications of the fundraising process with the city solicitor. Because I know that the laws have changed, and there was a concern there by the mayor, and to see if it was appropriate that we could even raise the funds. The superintendent was going to investigate that, the ability to proceed with the city solicitor and the Greater Lowell Foundation, and report back to the full committee, and the necessity to use upcoming union negotiations effectively to begin contract discussions about coaching and club advisor stipends. And that basically was the summary of the meeting. However, I think that in light of what has come up in the last, I said, the last 24 hours, with this money coming back, I'm wondering whether we could make a motion. I mean, I'd like to make a motion now that we have a line item for sports that have been funded for the year, and that...
That would be out of order, Mr. Conway.
I'm sorry?
Your motion would be out of order. You cannot bring up a motion unless it's been previously brought forward, unless it's been printed on the agenda. At a new open meeting, like, you cannot bring up a motion. I don't believe, I could stand corrected, but I don't believe you can.
Okay.
You can accept this report as a report of progress, and you can file a motion for the next meeting, but I don't believe we can entertain the motion.
All right. So be it. And we adjourned at approximately 8:00. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Conway. Any other discussion on the report? Motion by Mr. Leary, seconded by Mr. Leahy to accept the report as a report of progress. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, to vote. Thank you. Thank you again, Mr. Conway. Moving on, report of the superintendent. We did deal with the first item, the stimulus funding. The next item would be the Level Four Process Summer 2010. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Your Honor. The Level Four Process at the Merklin School has gone very well this summer. As an update to the committee and to our community at large, the Merklin School Redesign Team and the state and district personnel and representatives from our community training and assistance center have worked diligently this summer to develop an improvement plan for the school. The school redesign team has met twice each week, on Tuesday and a Thursday morning through the months of July and August. That time has been spent in the following manner. They've analyzed their data. The team has analyzed perceptual data gathered through the CTEC's Organizational Assessment Survey, MCAS, ELA, mathematics, achievement data, MCAS, ELA, mathematics, growth data, NEPA-Melowall results, school population data, and school-by-school comparisons. Casual analysis, using the Fishbow Method of Analysis and the Five Whys process, the team has generated a number of possible root causes for the challenges that presently face the school. Through this analysis, the team has considered causal factors in leadership, curriculum instruction, parent involvement, teacher effectiveness, and evaluation, student responsibility, and support, and district systems of support. Brainstorming, the team has begun the work of thinking outside the box to generate ideas aimed at increasing student achievement. Some of these ideas include teachers will unpack standards by grade level to ensure continuity and avoid gaps in learning. Teachers will create grade level scope and sequence charts, and teacher teams will work vertically to better teach themes and to avoid duplication. The morale of the team is standing at this time, and following short selection from a letter drafted by the Merklin School Redesign Team members to the rest of their colleagues on staff, they state, "We have all chosen to be part of the Merklin because we know the importance of the work we do, and we share a passion for the children we teach and their families. We see within ourselves the strength, resilience, and commitment it will take to move from life as usual to a more dynamic vision of teaching and learning. The Merklin School will submit its turnaround plan to you early this fall and to the Department of Education by September the 30th with the full and final plan due to the department by December the 1st."
Any questions on the report? Hearing none. Motion by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Ms. Martin to accept the report as a report of progress. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, to vote. Next item, fundraising for clubs and sports.
Thank you, Your Honor. As per the mayor's request, as a follow-up to the August 11 Athletic Subcommittee meeting, I spoke with the city solicitor and the State Ethics Commission about the fundraising ideas discussed at the meeting. As a result of these discussions, please be advised of the following. The school committees/school department is allowed to hold an event where they would sell tickets to a program. The monies raised could be placed into a student activity account to be spent on clubs and sports. Various fundraising activities can also be handled through organizations like Friends of Lowell High or the Greater Lowell Community Foundation, as we have done in the past. However, members of the school committee or the school department directly soliciting sales of tickets or other types of direct involvement in fundraising activities may raise issues under MGL Section 268A, the State Conflict of Interest Statute. Accordingly, prior to engaging in any direct solicitation or other fundraising activities, individuals are encouraged to contact the city solicitor's office or the State Ethics Commission's for any advisory opinion.
Any questions? Motion by Ms. Martin to accept the report as a report of progress, seconded by Ms. Doherty. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, to vote. Next item, Varnum Elementary School Playground Equipment. Dr. Scott?
Thank you, Your Honor. There was a motion made by committee member John Leahy to request the superintendent contact the appropriate city department to see if they can assist in reallocating the playground equipment from the Varnum School to another school in need of this equipment. The update on that particular situation is that Brian Curley, Director of Operations and Maintenance, has investigated the matter with the City of Lowell Parks and Recreation Department. The playground on the Varnum Elementary property is officially known as the Mary Ann Recker Community Playground, dedicated April 27, 2000. Centerville Neighborhood Group and the City of Lowell Parks and Recreation Department contributed funds to establish the park. The neighborhood children continue to use the park on a daily basis. The playground equipment at the Varnum Elementary School site does not belong to Lowell Public Schools, and therefore cannot be relocated to another public school location.
Any questions on the report? Motion by Mr. Leary, seconded by Mr. Leahy to accept the report as a report of progress. All those in favor, signify by saying yes. Opposed? Thank you. And the last item under report, home education. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Your Honor. The following parent seeks permission to home educate their children, Ronan Mark Goffstein, 95, Fontaine Drive. Under General Laws, Chapter 76, Section 1, home education is constitutionally permissible there. Therefore, I recommend approval of this request. If granted, the number of families approved by the Lowell School Committee to be homeschooled will total 23, and the total number of children will be 51.
Any questions? Motion to approve the request by Mr. Leary, seconded by Mr. Conway. Roll call. Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Lariva?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Seven ayes, approved.
Thank you. Under new business, we have four items under new business. The first is permission to post duty assistant. Since this went on the agenda, we did receive a letter from Paul Georges, President of UTL, requesting that we really hold on this position at this time, but in my discussions with Madam Superintendent, that we should or could move forward subject to the obligations of the bargaining unit under the law, and actually approve the job description at this particular point in time. But I certainly would open it up for my colleagues if they have any questions of the superintendent at this particular point in time. Mr. Leahy?
Sir, I couldn't really fully understand that. I couldn't understand what you were saying.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's come, I don't know, tonight it's coming across muffled.
Yeah. Okay. I know. Actually getting a lot of feedback up here as well. Again, we did, under this permission to post the duty assistant, we did receive a letter that was in our packets from Mr. Georges indicating that they feel that the creation of the position might undermine paraprofessional and teaching positions within the unit. Again, being mindful of that, we would like to proceed with approving the job description, keeping in mind that it's subject to all the obligations of the bargaining unit that's currently in place under the law. So with that said, I guess I would look to Madam Superintendent for an update, and then hopefully get the job description approved.
The purpose of bringing forward the duty assistant position was twofold. One, we do have many professionals throughout the system covering bus duty, recess duty, et cetera. And we have requested that the principals, wherever possible, have their professional staff working on curriculum work, aligning their curriculum, analyzing their data, improving instruction in their classrooms. We think that with this position, we would be able to bring more professionals together for work of improving our schools and advancing our educational mission. And having the duty assistant position, that would be considerably at less cost, $12 an hour than the professionals who are presently on duty. How this position is used in other school districts, you would still have, let's say if you have right now 10 people on professional duty, sorry, at recess or bus duty, you would still have a number of professionals on duty, but all 10 or all 15 of them wouldn't have to be professionals, that you would have this duty assistant position available.
Mr. Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, through you to the superintendent. In the elementary schools and the middle schools, do paras do those duties now?
Right now, paraprofessionals and teachers, coaches, administrators basically perform these duties. And the letter that was given to you before the meeting tonight, that we just received, the letter from the union at 4:00 today, basically stated that they had some concerns over the fact that this would be, this position would take over duties that paraprofessionals and teachers have done in the past. So that their request at this point was for us to take it off of the agenda so that we could discuss it further with them. The suggestion that the mayor has just made to the committee simply states that if the committee votes the job description, it would be with the understanding that it would fully have to be impact bargained with the union.
You all set, Mr. Conway? Thank you. Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. I'm just doing some quick math here. So we'd be looking at, in a, you know, full year, this one position would cost approximately, I'm guessing, like $7,000? No benefits with that, but just straight salary? Is that close?
Right. And the reason why I'm hesitant to say a definite on that is because individual principals, this would give them the flexibility to hire a duty assistant, maybe for, they only need it for maybe for three hours in a day. Another school may need a duty assistant for seven hours of the day. But all of those hours would be, the argument being made here is considerably less expensive to the district than putting professionals in those positions, or even a paraprofessional. And the concern, again, of the UTL and why they would like it, and the suggestion has been made that we do need to impact bargain, because these duties presently were being done by teachers and by paraprofessionals in the district.
Ms. Martin?
You know, I can, I can understand kind of the, both sides on this one. But I will say, I am, I would really support the idea of being able to create a position that provided this relief for educators, that would give them that, you know, what we struggle with all the time. Opportunities for common planning time, to really have them working on curriculum issues and doing their teamwork. I mean, I would support that. My concern is that even at, and this is a bargain, I mean, and all, we can all recognize that. The idea of having that, this kind of position, I can see where it would be very useful for principals. But it's not in our budget right now. And even at this rate, it's not in our budget right now. And I think we recognize that things may be changing, and we may have some flexibility certainly moving forward. So I'm not sure why it's coming right now, if we don't, if there aren't already places where we think we're going to use it. I mean, what's the rush?
Madam Superintendent?
As, when we discussed this position with the principals, we informed them that there was no line item in our budget to fund this particular position, but that we were well aware of the fact that they applied for grants, that they would be receiving stimulus money to build capacity on their teams. And if you have to release teachers, I would rather them release teachers on stimulus money to do curriculum work if it's within the guidelines of the grant or of us to not have to necessarily bring in a substitute teacher to cover a duty period or after-school time. So it's really, at this point in time, it's to give us options. I can't tell you how many duty assistants would be required across the system, but that this would, in fact, be able to offer us that flexibility. But again, at this point, because the position, my understanding, Ms. Martin, has to be impact bargained, I don't see us getting this position necessarily anytime soon, but at least it pushes the argument forward, and we can start down the journey.
Mr. Conway, then Mr. Leahy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Mayor, through you to the superintendent. One of the questions I was going to ask was, and I guess you already answered, how many, how many would you, of these duty assistants, would you want to, are you talking about hiring? Do you have any idea on that?
Again, just to follow up on what Ms. Martin said, there's not a rush at the moment to hire people. We just want to move this position along, get it in, on the agenda, have it discussed to the extent that we have to impact bargain it, if the committee wishes to do that. That would just ultimately give us another vehicle or another avenue to when we're writing grants, when we receive building capacity monies, to target our money and to budget it in different ways than we presently have available to us.
I think that when you mentioned about the common planning time, I think that's something that is extremely important. And if the time was used for that, I think that the teachers would perhaps, would certainly applaud you on that. Would that extra time be left up to the discretion of you and your office on what to do with those teachers if we had additional time?
Well, again, right now, as the contract's written, our teachers do bus duties, recess duties, et cetera. And after listening to our teachers throughout the system, it really did come from an outcry from them as well, that they would rather, many of them, sit down and look at their lessons, look at their data, and improve instruction in their classrooms than doing lunch duty in the rain.
So the question I have then is that you're not talking about adding on another class to the teacher's schedule. Is that correct?
This position does have, give us that option throughout the system as well, because the contract already gives us that option. So in the teacher's contract, as presently negotiated, the superintendent can ask a teacher to teach an extra class. That already exists in your contract if it's deemed necessary for the educational process.
The paraprofessionals, how many paraprofessionals were laid off?
Throw me to Mr. Lang for the exact number, the in total.
It was in the mid-20s.
Yeah.
So I don't have the exact number. Mid-20s somewhere.
So if you're assuming, let's just say for argument's sake, and I'm not sure whether we can do this or not, but let's, for argument's sake, we have sufficient funds to bring back many individuals. Would you be bringing the paras back? Would you be bringing all them back first before a duty assistant position was filled?
Again, that's just too hypothetical and premature at this time to say. The timeline of this position, again, just because it does have to be impact bargain is down the road. So we're hoping to receive monies from the federal government to Lowell sometime in the next 60 days that we're able to use for advancing our educational programs here in the city.
I just hesitate to create new positions when we have so many people that have been laid off. That's a concern. Thank you.
Madam Superintendent? Madam Superintendent, then Mr. Leahy.
And again, it is definitely a double-edged sword for us because we have laid off 28 instructional assistants. We are short in our buildings for coverage. So teachers who used to only have a few duties will have many more, taking them again away from the core mission of our district. So that's in part why, and I'm glad you brought it up because it fills out my answer to Ms. Martin of why now. We really have laid off so many people that we will require more highly-paid professionals to do this duty time.
Mr. Leahy, then Ms. Doherty.
Thank you. I guess I just wanted to add that, you know, I had the same questions, I had called, through you the superintendent. I had called superintendent and I had a lot of concerns, but, I mean, when you think about it, this is a good idea because, I mean, it gives teachers and the paraprofessionals that much more time to plan their lessons, to go over their work, to work with the students. So it's a shame that it has to go through the process again and be held up, but it's a good idea and it's, it's good for the kids in the classroom.
Thank you. Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just would like to echo what my colleague just said. I also had a conversation with the superintendent about this. I think it makes absolute sense to take our experts in teaching and give them the opportunity to work together more or to work more closely with students and to have people doing the hall duty or the cafeteria duty that are, that are not as highly paid, that do not have the expertise so that we can get the most bang from our buck, especially during these difficult times. So I understand this complications in terms of impact bargaining and that we haven't really got the funding yet, but I completely support the idea of having our professionals doing the professional work that they're educated and hired to do. And I'm supporting this request. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Larry?
I'll be brief, Your Honor. I'm going to support it as well. I think Ms. Doherty put it very well. You're taking the teachers and you're letting them, allowing your professionals to educate the student more and to prepare for education as opposed to, you know, sitting during a lunch duty. So I think it's, it's a good thing to consider. There are other details that need to be worked out. A comment was made regarding, would we bring back paraprofessionals? I think obviously our paraprofessionals that we let off are excellent people. If it's a position that we do go forward and we don't have money to bring back paraprofessionals under the stimulus, obviously this is an area I would encourage and I think would be a good idea to bring back the people who we know are good workers, which, you know, our people are good workers. So I'm going to support it and I think, you know, I look forward to seeing how the impact, the bargaining with the unions go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Martin, then Mr. Leahy again.
Thank you very much. I just want to make sure that I'm clear on kind of the parameters that we're talking about. So basically what we'd be voting on tonight would be to, voting to instruct the superintendent to establish this as a new position, a new job description within the district, recognizing that we cannot use it, we cannot put anyone in this position, we cannot really do anything with it.
Correct.
Until negotiations have happened with the union and we've done, gone through the impact bargaining process. And so unless and until that happens, and then unless and until there's actual money to be allocated towards this, and unless and until it's part of an overall plan within particular school communities who see this as something that they can implement. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Leahy?
Thank you. I threw you to the superintendent. I just have one other quick. We used to have someone, a position called teacher's aides, so this is pretty much like that position. So does that, does the history go back now? I thought that's, well, paraprofessional, the teacher's aide kind of grew into the paraprofessional, wouldn't you say? So I'm just wondering if you need to impact, if you need to go back, because I thought this position was already in our school system a few years back, so maybe we could look at that angle, too.
Ms. Martin?
I would just say through you, and I'm sorry, that I believe the difference in that criteria now is that the teacher's aide position did morph into the paraprofessional, which now has different requirements in terms of education level. It's no longer a high school equivalent or a GED. They need to have an associate's degree. And this is clearly a part-time position, specifically drawn that way, which would, you know, also make it dramatically different from our traditional paraprofessional or even the teacher's aide positions.
Madam Superintendent?
And maybe no, just to piggyback on what Ms. Martin said, just to highlight the fact that this position is part-time, hourly, and no healthcare costs associated with it. But again, putting it here gets the ball moving forward. We can continue to have the conversation and it appears it will be a long journey.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Do I have a first and second? I don't have a first or second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Leahy, second by Ms. Doherty, that we move forward to post the duty assistant and approve the job description as presented?
Mayor Millenazzo.
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Lariva?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Madam Superintendent?
Mayor, do we have to vote that the position will now be put forward to impact bargain as per the earlier meeting?
I believe we need to refer to the Personnel Subcommittee before it can be posted. We've approved the job description, now we have to send it to the Personnel Subcommittee.
Madam Superintendent?
I think, just a point of clarification, Mayor, but it wasn't my, it was my understanding with the attorneys that we had to bring this position forward, get the vote of the School Committee on the job description for us to be able to have it to impact bargain with.
Correct.
So I couldn't bring up the idea without, now you voted the idea, now we can just, I believe, take it into negotiations. Was that your understanding?
Correct, yes, that was my understanding as well. Ms. Lariva?
Perhaps my memory is fuzzy, but there was also a conversation, if I recall correctly, that we had the ability to create a position needed and not necessarily put it through negotiations, but because the union did make a comment about it, that in good faith we were going to have that conversation with the union.
Madam Superintendent?
Right, that was my understanding, too, that we were going to have the conversation. The difference between our interpretation, I guess, of that conversation was just that I thought it was going to be in the context of negotiations.
And not the Personnel Subcommittee?
Right.
Right. So we would need a motion, as the superintendent indicates, to move forward with the impact bargaining. Ms. Lariva?
I'll make that motion for you.
Motion by Ms. Lariva, second by Mr. Leary. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Millenazzo?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Lariva?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Thank you. The next item under New Business, Permission to Post Payroll Department Supervisor. Chair recognizes Madam Superintendent.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would like to ask Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations Jay Lang to go over the details of the need for this particular position. As the committee is aware, we've restructured Central Office and there was a few positions, as we made the committee aware, that we didn't automatically rehire in employees into. We want to see basically how the training went with the personnel that we put into different positions. And at this time, we do see a need to hire this payroll department supervisor. Mr. Lang?
Thank you. You have a report that I forwarded to the superintendent regarding this particular position. If you recall, last, over the course of the winter, we brought forward a proposal to reorganize the Personnel Office under the guise of the Business Office and have done so and realigned several positions for some cost savings and also just organizational restructuring for some efficiencies. One of the positions that I had flagged at the time, that I looked at over the course of the spring, was the payroll department. If you recall, we had an Assistant Superintendent of Personnel and then I had an Assistant Business Manager, whose about at least half of his duties were around the human service side of things. So we have now combined that position and individual, and so we pretty much have one person doing the HR function for the district, which is working out quite well. But that, that individual and the other half of his time was assisting me on a number of projects and one was overseeing our payroll department. So that, with him leaving to the HR function, both of us have been sharing that duty over the course of the spring and it has just become apparent that that is going to be a, a department that's going to need some additional oversight and just some daily attention that really, both Mr. Cassidy and myself are having difficulty meeting their needs. It's an office that has always functioned with four support staff. We, compounding this issue, we did have the passing of one of our support staff last spring. So we've been functioning with three, bless you, with three individuals and we've kind of divvied up the workload to other clerks at Central for the, for the function of the fourth individual. But it really is apparent, and I really do want to, before we get too deep into the school year, kind of recollect those payrolls and have everything going through the one office, just from a management standpoint. The, the duties are significant, the requests, both on the local grant and stimulus side for reporting are just ever increasing. The retirement system is requiring more and more reports of us and the, the data that we keep not only on payroll but on staff positions within the district, it just seems to be ever-expanding. So my proposal is, and I hope the committee would support me in this, instead of bringing back the fourth payroll clerk to augment that salary to the payroll supervisor level, which is all within the same union, so we would still have four individuals in that office, I'm just asking that one of the four be elevated to the payroll supervisor to take on some of the day-to-day responsibilities and to be able to serve with me and Mike in the retirement capacity and reporting functions that a really higher-level individual should be doing. So the, the pay differential between the current fourth position, which is vacant but budgeted at $41,000, would need to be augmented by an additional $8,000. It's, I just want to be clear, it's not adding an extra position to that office. It's intended to be a four-position office. It would still be a four-position office. I'm just asking for one of the four individuals to be, four positions to be posted and elevated to the supervisor level. And as a funding source for this, we have a line item within the budget for clerical support and overtime, so to keep it, again, within the union and within the function, I'm recommending that the differential of $8,000 be transferred from the overtime account to the general administrative salary account to fund that differential.
So we would actually be looking at two motions. The first would be to authorize the superintendent to post a position of payroll department supervisor in accordance with the collective bargaining agreement between the Lowell School Committee and SEIU Local 888. That'd be the first motion. Motion by Ms. Lariva, second by Mr. Conway. Any discussion? Mr. Larry?
I hesitate to support this for a couple of reasons, and it's not because of a potential need in this area or even the $8,297. The reason why I hesitate to propose this is because it's, it is a central office function. And one of the things that we began last year with some of our discussions with the City Council was to look at areas, synergies, that's an overused word, where we could be having each side working together in terms of handling functions. And the chairman of the City Council Finance Subcommittee, Rodney Elliott, and I have set up another joint meeting for the 14th of September to begin having more of a detailed discussion. I don't know the outcome of those discussions. I don't even know where I personally stand in terms of combining departments or not combining departments, but I think before we start changing any of the positions, especially in central office where it's not directly educationally orientated, we should hesitate a little bit. We, not that I wouldn't support it going forward after having these discussions, it might be that the city side would be unable to provide assistance and we're already thin-staffed and need that oversight role, but we have done it for six months. We are going to have some detailed discussions. Again, I don't know where those discussions are going to go. They may show that in areas we're deficient with personnel and there's not much more we can do other than work together. Although it might show that we can combine some of our departments, especially in the payroll functions. Again, I don't know how, I can repeat myself over and over again. I don't even know where I would stand in the future with that, but those discussions will begin and I would hesitate supporting this at this point in time. Thank you.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. Through you to the superintendent or perhaps Assistant Superintendent Lang, I have a question and I'm not sure how this, how this translates in a labor environment, but does the changing of this level of this position, moving it into a supervisory level, does that then make it a non, make it an exempt position? That then we're no longer required to have overtime or any of those other kind of constraints around, around the position? That now that's a position that just stays until the job is done? I don't know if that's accurate in a labor environment.
Yeah, I know the intent, the intent of your question. No, in this particular scenario, both the, do you mind if I respond? Both, that's okay. Both the, the position itself, the job description that accompanies that position, the grade, has already been established and it is a position that's recognized within the SEIU contract. So there's an existing salary grid and pay structure and job description, which is already in the union. So we wouldn't be able to make it, say, a non-union position at this point unless we actually created a new position, petitioned the Labor Relations Board to have the position be exempted under a number of qualifications, which quite honestly, I don't think any of these positions would serve under. They would have to be in some type of an advisory capacity around collective bargaining issues, things like that, to the superintendent or myself to qualify. As far as, so as far as the position goes, no, it would have to be in the union because it is recognized and it existed for years. It's just when the individual retired from the position, again, I think due to budget cuts at that point, when I actually came to the Business Office, the individual was there, there were, I think, six or seven people in the payroll office. So again, it's just been a department that's been depleted over the number of years that we've been managing with the, the four bodies. I don't see it ever being a department that could go below the four bodies and it's not that we're, you know, functioning well, to be quite honest with the three. I'm having to pull from other departments to supplement that fourth individual at this point. Overtime in this, the, there is an overtime per se associated with this position and I think four people working, you know, daily basis in this particular department wouldn't necessitate overtime on a regular basis. I'm actually saying use the overtime account that we use for the whole Central Office or even other schools if necessary to fund the differential. So it's not that there's actually overtime associated with this position.
No, and I understand that. And I'm not necessarily asking about moving the position out of the union, that wasn't my intent. And again, this may be just a matter of living in different, different, you know, regulatory worlds, but I know in, in private sector or, you know, where, where I work in nonprofit, there is this differentiation between exempted employees and non-exempted employees. And one of the benefits of having, of bringing someone to a higher supervisory level is that you're no longer mandated by hours per week.
Okay.
That they're accepting the role as a, as a professional. I would have assumed that was true both in a union environment and not, but...
It's not.
Okay. Silly rabbit. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Madam Superintendent?
And just a couple of points of clarification, I think, Mr. Lang, that might be helpful for the committee. This, as you mentioned, this department ran with four people. One of our employees passed away very sadly, and so it wasn't the intent of this administration to reduce that department by one more. And that Mr. Lang's request here to fill that position, what takes it to another level, to your question, Ms. Martin, is in fact that because of the restructuring that we did do in the Personnel and the Business Offices, that oversight piece has been significantly impacted because the Business Manager, Assistant Business Manager position moved, as we're aware, to the Human Resource Department, leaving Mr. Lang with many oversight responsibilities. The third point I'd like to make on this particular position is to the extent that this position isn't filled, we will, just because of the volume of the work in that particular department, it is my understanding, Mr. Lang, that we will have to tap overtime at different times and that's why you've chosen this funding source?
Well...
Because if we adequately staff that department...
What we'd end up doing, if it weren't approved, if the upgrade wasn't approved, it's still a, it's still a department that at least necessitates four individuals. So I would continue to have to pull from the other departments at Central to staff the fourth position. That's the downside.
Ms. Doherty, then Mr. Larry.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm going to support this request. I, I want to just remind my colleagues that when we made the adjustments to the Personnel Office, at that time, Mr. Lang, during his presentation, asked us to keep in open mind that he might come back to us. All he's asking for is an upgrade. And with, you know, under... All he's asking for is an upgrade and with, you know, understanding that, we do have a meeting, I'm on the finance subcommittee for September fourteenth, to look at ways to save money and consolidate with the city, that's not going to happen overnight. That's going to take some time and some real thought and whether we could ultimately even find, if this would be one of the areas that we could agree on, no one knows that. In the meantime, we have immediate needs here and we're talking about an upgrade of a little over eight thousand dollars for, you know, a major restructuring of our personnel in response to that restructuring. So I think it's a reasonable request, I think it's something we need to do and I'm going to support it. Thank you.
Mr. Larry?
Thank you, just briefly, it's not an unreasonable request, I'll acknowledge that. I just think when you look at the bigger picture and we may have major changes next year, and I do say in light of potentially getting three point five million dollars dumped on you, which is a good problem to have, I think we can go a few more months and have these discussions. It's a, you know, it's not going to kill anybody by waiting a couple more months and looking at it, it's not going to ruin everything if we make, change our opinion at next year and eliminate the position. Just think when you go forward with these types of positions, these discussions, we should wait a little while. That's all. Thank you.
Any further discussion on authorizing the superintendent, Mr. Leahy?
Thank you. I guess I did have one question about the position through you to Mr. Lang. Is this something that when we do have our meeting with the city council, is this a position or an office that we can discuss, have discussions with about combining with the city in an effort to consolidate?
Yeah, the, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, the agenda, you know, for that meeting or for any meeting is kind of wide open, anything is fair game. I'm sure we'll be talking, you know, central office right out to the schools and city functions and things of that sort. I, you know, me personally, I, we're going to need four people in our office to function this payroll. In the absence of this, the city-side payroll supervisor and staff, you know, has also helped. I'll be honest with you, and in the auditor's office, they're very short-staffed as far as individuals go. If it was an issue where we didn't want to fill this one position and, you know, the city had someone they want to put in and help us do that, you know, that'd be, that'd be fine. This isn't the kind of position where they're going to have an extra body on their side that's going to help out. It's really a decision of the committee.
And I just have one other question with the, I know this is all, has been negotiated over the years, but it jumps up from grade five to grade eight, eight, you're saying?
No, within the clerical union, there are, you know, grade three, four, five, six, seven, eight, it's just that the payroll supervisor position is grade eight, it's the highest grade within that clerical union. Our account clerks or our payroll clerks now at central office are grade five. Grade six, I believe, are some special secretaries, maybe to the headmaster or others. Grade seven would be an executive secretary to the superintendent and assistant superintendents, and then grade eight was the payroll supervisor position. So it all, there are certain grades in between, but each position is classified within a pay grid and with specific job duties, responsibilities, and it's already been classified.
All right, because I'm just having a problem with that the confidential secretary position seems like it should be higher than the payroll supervisor clerk, so I'm just kind of wrestling in my head that the responsibilities maybe...
I think, again, this has been a longstanding position, this is nothing I was involved with bargaining-wise. This is one position within that particular bargaining unit that actually has supervisory responsibilities over other individuals. The confidential secretaries would report, say, directly to me, but they wouldn't actually supervise any support staff. I think when it jumps to a threshold where you have any individual within the school department having more responsibility for just themselves, but for actually managing others, it notches it up a ratch, ratchets it up a notch. And it's that supervisory experience and responsibility that provides for the extra grade.
Okay. So there's really no need to put this off, like, till the next meeting, until we have a discussion with the city council, finance?
It's the wish of the board.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Ms. Larva? No, I'm sorry. Any other discussion on authorizing? Roll call.
Mayor Millenazzo?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Larva?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Larry?
No.
Ms. Martin? Six yeas, one nay, passes.
We also have assistant superintendent recommending that we transfer the eight thousand two hundred ninety-seven dollars from the clerical substitute and overtime to clerical staff administration to provide the salary differential. Motion by Ms. Larva, second by Ms. Doherty. Any discussion on the transfer? Roll call. Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Larva?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Larry?
No.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Six yeas, one nay, passes.
Thank you. Next item under new business, permission to post science lead teacher stipends elementary and middle schools. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Your Honor. These teachers will work after school hours out of the curriculum office under the direction of Claire Abrams, our K-12 coordinator of mathematics. The role these teachers will entail, conducting monthly science curriculum meetings, providing professional development to grade-level teachers, as well as updating the district on changes that will be forthcoming through revised Massachusetts science and technology engineering standards. The lead teacher stipends will be paid by professional development funds. Again, these are two stipended positions.
Ms. Doherty?
Thank you. Through you to the superintendent, just a couple of quick questions. How much is the stipend exactly? And how would the teachers be able to hold monthly science curriculum meetings? I mean, are we going to be building that into our early release days or how are they going to meet with the other science teachers?
I'll answer the question in part, if you don't mind, and then turn it over to Deputy Assistant Superintendent Franco. But these positions are important as Claire Abrams has presently, as you know, is our math coordinator, but we have in the last couple of years continued to add more to her job description around science and health and sex education. And we do think that having two teachers in our district who are stipended at the amount of thirty-six hundred dollars, which is a stipend that has been negotiated, that will, clearly we would like a science coordinator for the district. We'd like to hire additional science teachers. We're not in that position, but we feel that by offering two stipended positions, that will offer additional leadership, that we can bring teachers together after school who, yes, the teachers who are brought together after school will be paid at the thirty-dollar an hour rate to discuss their curriculum, align their curriculum, and establish vertical teams. Do you have anything else to add?
Basically, the positions will just take that specific content knowledge, so we already have curriculum committees that have been ongoing for years and this, these people will be able to work more closely with Claire to go into the details of the work. So we have after-school meetings on a monthly basis with teachers, but this person can go to Department of Education meetings, there are new standards that are coming out, they're upgrading the standards, so it's kind of a go-between where Claire covers a lot of the meetings and some of our teachers do, so they would do after-school time and some of the Department of Education meeting time. So occasionally between the two positions, we'd have some substitutes. Just that the Department of Education have augmented the standards and what they want from us around science, and it's just a lot for the coordinator of mathematics since her coaching assistance has been cut in half due to budget cuts, we just thought it would be a way for us to get content-specific people in there. And it comes to about forty hours a year, after-school time, they'll come and they'll work on curricula, it comes out, you know, about that much time a year, and they'll work directly with Claire. Couple of people already do some work for us for extra money or hourly, but this would make them more consistent and have kind of an authority with teachers or, you know, their lead teacher. We have ESL lead teachers and this would be another lead teacher in content. And it's specifically because science is really, we need to look more at our science and we're going to be piloting, thinking of piloting some things in science, so it's just time for us to have more content experts around us more regularly.
Any other questions, Ms. Martin and Mr. Leahy?
So we're talking, and I'm sorry, just, it was, because it is hard to hear tonight, it must be the fans. So thirty-six hundred is the standard? Okay. Is there any way that we'd be able to, you know, I see reference here to the science, technology, and engineering benchmarks. I know we've been having a great many conversations about the health requirements and kind of the science aspects of that. Would there be capacity within this stipended position to include that?
Yes, that would all be included. One of the members of our staff is a representative on the state board and so, in fact, as those curricula standards are coming down, we have to, we have to now update all the things that are going on, so, yeah, that would be part of it, as well as the health and the science pieces where they intersect.
Mr. Leahy?
Thank you. I thought this was a good idea. I talked to a few science teachers and they were excited about the idea, so, and I thought it was good because some of the questions that we all ask, you know, why are certain schools doing so much more, this is going to help everybody step up to the plate, I guess, if you, that's the way you want to put it, and really get these kids involved and hands-on science and really get them excited. So I think it's a great suggestion here and I hope it passes. Thank you.
Motion by Mr. Leahy, second by Ms. Doherty, that we move forward to post the science lead teacher stipends. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Millenazzo?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Larva?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Larry?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Next item, disposition of the Varnum Elementary School. Let me read the vote to get it on the floor. Vote pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty, Section fifteen A, is amended. The school committee of the City of Lowell hereby declares that the land with the buildings thereon known as the Varnum Elementary School, located at one fifteen Sixth Street, Lowell, is no longer needed for school purposes or any other educational purposes and further hereby transfers the care, custody, management, and control of said land and the buildings thereon to the City of Lowell to be used for such other municipal purpose as the appropriate officials may determine. Motion by Ms. Doherty, second by Mr. Conway. Ms., Madam Superintendent, votes on the floor. Any update, any?
Nothing to add, Your Honor.
Nothing to add? Mr. Leahy?
Thank you. It's about time that we voted this back, but I guess I would just have concern about that playground again, so I suppose that'll go, wherever it's going to go, it'll be appropriate to put it back so the kids can use it somewhere, because obviously, once the city takes over, right, is that going to be locked up or?
Madam Superintendent?
It's my understanding, and I would have Mr. Lang correct me if I'm wrong on this, but it's my understanding that it is the City of Lowell who does own the equipment along with the neighborhood group, so the City of Lowell would determine, once they, in fact, once we give back the school to the city, they would proceed to determine and work with that community group to decide what would happen with that, but that wouldn't be our call to make.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comment? Ms. Larva?
Through you to the superintendent. This is just a building that we can no longer use because of size and not able to bring it up to standards, just, I want to clarify that.
This question is best answered by Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations, but yes, it is a very, very old school, so I'll let him give you the details.
Thank you. The Varnum School is very old. It, we closed it two years ago as a school, largely due to class size and shrinking enrollments. The Varnum School is a school we used on our MSBA application as a placeholder for the Sappisara School. The Varnum School at this point, after a school is closed for educational purposes for a two-year period, the school department could open it up again if we had some kind of either educational or alternative purpose under the, kind of the same certification you would receive from the DOE as it was originally opened. We have just no existing use based on our current student enrollment or even alternative programs because the building isn't handicap accessible. So we're very limited as to what we could actually use the building for. We did look at, we really scoped out the entire operation and there's definitely issues with the fact that, say, bathroom locations, things of that are only in the basement. So right off the bat, even if we were able to do something to get people into the first floor, all of your restroom facilities are in the basement, which was going to necessitate some kind of a lift or an elevator. The problems were just mounting with that particular facility. After a two-year period, when we don't use the building for educational use, you actually have to go back through a recertification process with the DOE to put the building back in play if we wanted to. And at this point, again, because of the handicap accessibility issues and a number of other structural issues with the facility, it's highly unlikely that we'd get the proper certification to open that back up for space. Anytime you shut a building of that nature and, you know, reduce heat, things of that, you start to have the shrinking and expanding with the different heating and cooling seasons. The issue, we held on to it largely for the last year because we really could have given it back a year ago, but it was our placeholder for the MSBA application with the Sappisaras. When we determined and decided to close the Rogers School, also due to enrollment issues and budget issues a year ago, and moved central office into the Rogers School, the Rogers School in the MSBA's opinion, in just their guidelines, is a school that, is a facility that could function as a school. So prior to us being able to even get back in the pipeline for funding for the Sappisaras, we would actually have to open the Rogers School back up again for student use and then move our admin office out of there to prove a need for space issues, to build another school. And that's just really not likely at this point, even over the next, you know, ten to fifteen years. The student enrollment projections are just not showing any major increases. We actually have to bring the Rogers School back online, funding is also going to be another issue. So to have it just be really sitting there, not being used, just doesn't make a lot of sense. So we'd recommend we give it back to the city for better use. This will remove the placeholder for the Sappisara School. The SBA has said at any given time in the future, when we have a need for both space or facility decline, we can reapply in that particular funding year to put, to get a Sappisara School back on a waiting list at that point to then expand. So if we can actually open the Rogers up, use that again for student use and need to go beyond that, at that point in time, we could put another application in with the SBA and get right back in the pipeline for funding the last school in the school building program.
Ms. Larva?
And we can't sell it and then use the funds?
Yeah, the school committee can't. The school committee is really tenants in the building. The city owns title to all of the properties and by vote of the city council, give it to a school department and authorization of the school committee to use as long as it's used for educational purposes. At such time that it's not used for educational purposes, the committee has to give it back to the city and then it solely rests with the city manager to make a recommendation to the council as to the disposition of the property.
Mr. Larry?
Just want to say, Mr. Lang answered a lot of the questions that I had, but just a quick comment and a quick question. Comment is, I guess, it is about time, like Mr. Leahy said, it doesn't have, the school of Varnum right now, in terms of value, holding on to it and not using it for the new Sappisara School is, doesn't make sense at this point, as Mr. Lang said. And I think the neighborhood would be glad to see the city start working with the groups up there to really make a decision as to what you're going to do with the building, so it's long overdue. Quick question, so we're going to return it to the city, we're going to make sure it's shiny, clean and everything, everything's going to be beautiful when we give it back?
Pick and span. It is going to look great.
Beautiful. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Roll call.
Mayor Millenazzo?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Larva?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Larry?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Present.
Six yeas, one present, passes.
Thank you. Under convention conference requests, we have two this evening. The first one, overnight student athletic trip request, Lowell High School hockey team to travel to Maine to compete in the Maine Hockey Tournament from Monday, December twenty-seventh through Thursday, December thirtieth, two thousand and ten. This trip falls during holiday recess, all costs to be paid by the Friends of Lowell High School Hockey Committee. We'll do them together. Motion by Ms. Doherty, second by Mr. Conway, that we take them up together, although it is favored, signify by saying aye. So, second one is overnight field trip request, Lowell High School teacher Kathleen Keefe, along with a group of students and Lowell High School staff, to travel to England, Ireland, and Wales from Saturday, February nineteenth, two thousand and eleven, and return on Sunday, February twenty-seventh, two thousand and eleven. This trip falls during winter vacation, there will be no cost to the school department budget, and no substitute teachers are needed. Motion to approve both the... Motion to approve both requests by Ms. Martin, second by Ms. Larva. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Millenazzo.
Yes.
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Ms. Doherty.
Yes.
Ms. Larva.
Yes.
Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Under communications, we have two items. We have, first, we have a thank-you note from the family of minus Jack Agoyan, um, thanking